Need your help in the middle of the alphabet. F, G, H, I. The fires. Help extinguish them. Help take care of the people that are fighting them. And guide us as we try to eradicate that type of disaster in our midst. G is for government. Help us if we make decisions. Help our leaders in Washington, in Olympia, here at the council. Do the very best they can to, on behalf of the public. H is for Harvey. Help out the fellow Texans, Louisians, that have been devastated beyond belief in their locale. And how they've come together, working together, to change. That was right into what is going to be good. And I is for Irma. The next hurricane coming down with the bike. Help those in her midst to stand fast, stand best in their locale. Help their sick neighbors and weather the storm. We ask this in your name. Amen.
My apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all else.
So the answer will present account for it's Senator Oden and I think he's in a town and Sean is lighting fires someplace.
Mayor, would you move to excuse Oden and Sean?
Second.
Looking second for the district mayor, on Thursday night. Hi. May I move the executive for you?
Second.
Actually, let me jump back on this. Sorry, forgot what I meant to do. If we can move the executive session under Citizen Comments number 14.
Second.
Number 12. Let's walk it through. So the floor.
Second.
Okay, say hi.
Hi. And then just before we get started with Citizen Comments, I know there's been a lot of conversation on social media and some of you are here to talk about some of the things that have been on social media about pools and etc. So as part of our policy, we ask that you fill out a wanted yellow card if you want to make a statement or have things that you want to talk about. And I also want to just bring to everyone the attention that while there's been a lot of conversations on social media about swimming pools, things like that, we as a council have had no discussions about pools and what we're going to put where. We haven't discussed it in any detail. There's been some conversations about what to do with different properties as a whole and to some funds toward what that might look like and how much that might be. But we have not committed to anything. So I want to kind of put that to rest because I know there's been a lot of conversations about this.
Okay. Katie, go ahead. Big couple comments on my board change center. Because we had that as a workshop.
So we all know that Liberty Creek Elementary School is opening tomorrow, oh tomorrow actually, first day of school. And in the course of planning for next year's budget, there were some facts that we wanted to put together to have a conversation with the council and others. And so what you'll see on this slide, and I apologize, Councilor Colson, or I'm guessing Chris could catch the light so it's a little bit easier to see. There was a variety of options so we could see kind of what some potential things could be at that site. So I'm going to ask Anna if she could scroll it up. So these are the six different ideas that we identified, and that's all they are. They're just concepts for purposes of looking at a site layout, looking at costs. And as council or as Mayor Pro Tem Brinkner indicated, nothing's been decided, there's been no in-depth conversations. So basically, options, let's see, A, B, C, and D show a parking lot, a sports field, and a swimming pool in some configuration with estimates that range from 4.1 to 4.3 million dollars. Option E is a sports field, an expansion of a parking lot that we built half of it about three or four years ago, and it's about $630,000. And then option EF was no built. And so these are just all different ideas. Nothing's been discussed in depth and nothing is in our budget at this time.
Okay. So we're at Citizen Comments, so I'm just going to run through the cards as I got them on top. So Rebecca Green. Rebecca?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm new to Liberty Lake. My family night is moved here with passion, and we bought property on Mallard, which is directly beside the field. And until my neighbor came the other night and had mentioned what he'd seen in this flash about a possible pool, we had no idea. We were told when we bought the property that it was an extension of the school land. And honestly, with children that go to both Liberty Lake and Liberty Creek, I'm surprised at seeing very little playground equipment at Liberty Creek. And I think a good idea would be maybe to sell a portion of that property back to the county so they could put additional schools over there. I'm an elementary school teacher, that was my profession up until two months ago, and not adequate equipment. I certainly don't want a public swimming pool in my backyard.
Okay.
I've seen coming from a, what used to be a small town, Murphy's Grove, Tennessee, they are consistently listed as one of the top 10 growing cities in the U.S. And I see what that has done to that city. I wouldn't want the same type thing to be happening in Liberty Lake.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi. I live here in the session of Boone and Malburn, and I want to talk about two different things. At Boone, Malburn, I only have another school there. The back of my house faces that intersection. I watch the traffic when school is opening and when it's closing, and it's beyond ridiculous. And at one point in time, there was, we call those barricaded sawhorses that were on, you know, blocking Malburn from being adhered to Boone. And then drivers would have to go all the way down towards the golf course and then split off and around. And it worked amazingly well. And this isn't a school issue and it isn't a homeowner's issue, it's a safety issue. That intersection is beyond ridiculous. And to help aid in the greening of the city, because it's amazing when somebody tries to take a left off of Boone to go north of Malburn, there's a stack of 30 cars idling for up to three, four minutes. I mean, that's a lot of wasted gas and pollution and time and all those people in cars, money, and safety to the children too, because they're trying to cross all four ways is ridiculous. And I see no reason why the city has a safety issue couldn't just put up the sawhorses, that's what you call them, on Malburn to make sure the people can only go on Boone. It would work unbelievably well. Okay, so that's my first issue. And I mentioned it before in this, in a council, a council meeting a couple of years ago, but now the school is there, it's just unbelievably near, in my opinion. Okay, now regarding the pool, I have a lot of things to say about the pool, but I see no way it's going to end up in that field. The concern I had is that the first I heard of it even being a possibility was reading in the flash comments made by, I believe, the mayor, and it seemed like a possibility. Logic would dictate that there's no way it's going to go there. I mean, so I'm not going to scream about that too much. I've got plenty of things to say and I'm not going to go there. But the big thing is, is crime vandalism fights liability. And therefore, I'm against any pool anywhere in town for the foreseeable future, which in my mind is, have 15, 20 years, a minimum. It's just, it just brings in people from out of town, people drop off their kids, give them 10 bucks, and it's like free babysitting, and then they're stolen all around town. They start fights, you know, the issues with the fights and altercations that the pools in other parts of the county. So I think that's all I'm going to say, because I just jumped on what was in the flash. And the fact that no people in the neighborhood, no residents were ever quizzed about even that with no possibility, I mean, it's just an amazing shock. And when I saw it, I immediately called one of your council members who helpfully explained to me that the whole thing is just a thing in progress and, you know, that's not necessarily that we're looking at different places. But I think we all know, it's not going to end up there, defense. It just, it just won't.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Ellen Baker?
So I would just like to say one policy about the traffic congestion. It's already pretty bad there. The school here is just starting. We're not really sure exactly how bad it's going to be yet. Also, in regards to the pool, you've got a bunch of kindergarten right next to that location. I just, I just don't think that that's a good idea to have a drowning hazard right there. And in addition to that, you know, even drowning hazard, even if you fence it, you know, how much are we talking about? Four million dollars to put something like that in there? That just doesn't seem to be a necessary expense. And when you're talking about liability, like I said, you're not just talking about a fence, you know, solving the problem. All it takes is one kid slipping and falling and bonking their head on the concrete, on the wet concrete, and you've got, you've got a liability that the city might have to pay for. And so I kind of think that this, the field for the school is pretty small. I like the idea of the kids having more room to play. I think that, you know, we signed on to that bond, we thought that that was what was going to happen, we're going to have a nice big field for our kids there. And now, I think a lot of us were caught off guard, not even realizing that that particular portion of that lot was owned by the city. And so I'm, I got to say, I'm kind of disappointed, kind of shocked to find that out. And I'd like to, I'd like to see something, you know, a little more kid-oriented, you know, for the school going in there.
Abby Schuster?
Hi. So I also live on Malburn and have a child going to Liberty Creek and saw this splash article. And just to kind of build upon and support what you've been said, it was, and I worked with the school district on that bond, and it was my understanding that that field went from street to street, just like Liberty Lake does. And didn't understand, I guess, you know, that partially on me, but did not understand that that school would not go all the way over to Boone. The grass area that the kids have to play in right now is essentially a swale, and it is always wet. And I have to say, if there's anything up there that I could be in support of, it would be E. So that our kids have room to run and play and be kids and not be worried about increased traffic in the neighborhood, a pool that they may or may not use. I just, I think it should be more of a park-like setting and definitely not a pool with traffic in that neighborhood. This is definitely residential. And we deal with a lot from the schools, but we do it happily because we want good schools in our community. The pool does not have that same priority in my mind.
Lynn Schmidt.
Can I go after Danette, please?
DJ. Okay, let's see here. I will. And so I'm going to Marcy Taylor.
So I'm just here also at the pool. I guess I was surprised, like you were, that I thought the school owned that. So I guess I'm just thinking, you know, the proposal or the proposition for the town square, the pool was rejected, then it was revisited and brought forward again, the pool taken out of the scope, and it was rejected again. So I was a little bit surprised to even see the pool issue coming up at all after it had kind of issued two propositions and been rejected. I live right there on the end, right next to that field. Definitely wouldn't be in favor of the pool there. I mean, like you say, it's a residential area, the school is enough, and you deal with that, and happily so. I don't even have kids anymore that live in the school, but they've been through those schools, so. But yeah, I'm just not in favor due to it being a residential area. It's already a heavily congested area anyway. The noise factor would definitely be something, as I look into maybe selling my house down the road, I don't think the next person buying that would be really in favor of buying that house if they knew that was going in. And then just, you know, I was concerned about the parking, but I didn't realize that the city owned that. But, you know, the ball fields that are already there, those are already, well, just do two ball tournaments on the weekends and also practices during the week, so that parking lot already goes up fast, the way it is.
Thank you. Dylan?
Could I use the podium here? I'd like to do a prepared statement. I am deeply disappointed to announce that I will be unable to continue my campaign for Liberty Lake City Council. Due to unexpected changes at my workplace, my job duties and workload have increased significantly over the past few months. These added responsibilities will not allow me to dedicate the time and attention to the city council that I feel people of Liberty Lake deserve. My wife and I remain dedicated to building a stronger sense of community that encourages neighbors getting to know each other, lending a helping hand where we see someone in need, and working together to help all of our Liberty Lake residents feel safe and at home here. We value the experience we've gained listening to community members express their ideas and concerns and discussing the shared desire for a better Liberty Lake. We appreciate the opportunity we've had to get to know some of our city council members, our extremely hardworking city staff, and our exemplary public safety officers. We are encouraged by the increased level of community involvement we've seen recently and the emphasis on the importance of accountability and transparency. Clear communication and government accountability are vital to keep our community informed, connected, and involved as Liberty Lake continues to grow. We hope that this increased interest will see more fresh faces stepping up to run for office and getting actively involved. Despite the unfortunate timing of my changes at work, I still intend to do my part to help serve our community to the best of my ability. It may not be as an elected official at this time, but my commitment to the city is unwavering. I would like to thank everyone who has supported me in my campaign, especially my wife, Allison, who with love and support have sustained me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate some of your stepping up. Thank you.
Sir, my comments are not related to the pool. Would you like me to still come forward or do you have to look at the pool?
Whatever you want.
Pagelets. I'd like to see pagelets.
We like it by the microphone, it's easier to record.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, our council, and our fine city residents. I appreciate being here today, speaking to you. In regards to something that the mayor just said that was not planned, but as always, I'm coming here to bring you information, help educate us so we are better prepared. In 2015, prior to a visit here, my daughter announced on a phone call that they were, the entire straits, the electricity had gone out. And as you know, most of you are probably here, when over a million people were affected by the storms that occurred within the county and the region. Now, why do I bring that up? I bring that up because FEMA often comes in to rescue and recover when things happen that are deleterious to our areas. But one thing that's very important is, Harvey is teaching us, is that we have to be diligent, we have to be awake, we have to be on our guard, we have to know what we're doing, and we have to act quickly. Because Mother Nature is in charge, we are not. Our city does not have coverage in the event of a flood disaster or what we would call a water incident. Our city, Liberty Lake, has not taken advantage. Perhaps it missed them. Perhaps it got by one government and the next government and it moved along. Who knows? There's no blame, but now we can fix what's happened. What does that mean for us? It means that if a natural disaster, water disaster, including a water main that may break in our city, including floods from the snow melt, including any type of water that can come and trespass into your home, over a certain amount, where your homeowner's insurance will not cover it. Your homeowner's insurance will not cover a flood disaster of any kind. Not today, not tomorrow, not even if FEMA comes in, and not even if this area is declared a natural disaster. Am I correct? Yes. Would I lie to you? Absolutely not. Does it matter to all of us? Our government, our citizens, our pets, our friends, our relatives, neighbors? It matters a lot. It will make the difference between what we keep and salvage if in the event a water disaster happens here. Even if it's declared a disaster, they will come in and rescue and recover. They will not repair. Your homeowner's insurance, none of us in this room have it, nor can we purchase it. At this time, we have been eliminated from the process. I've come today, I've come alone, but as I snoop around the internet and snoop around on what we're doing and what we can do better, and things we may have missed and things where we can, can salvage, I found this little caveat that says our city did not go in to help with the mitigation. What that means is, Post Falls is secure. Spokane is secure. Coeur d'Alene is secure. Cheney is secure. Spokane Valley is secure. And here we set the 9,500 plus or minus. Winner going to be in trouble. So because the council before, who knows? There's no blame here. We can take up the gauntlet. There is an ordinance that has already been prepared. It's a blueprint for us. You know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Our government has to adopt it and has to merely rip the ordinance out, become responsible. Why? If we flood, have a water incident of any kind, water main runoff from the snow, we know what can happen, we know who's in charge. Let's make sure for those of us that want to have that, what do they call it? Peace of mind are allowed to do that. We don't all have to buy it. But when we know only 10% or less of the people in Texas have the insurance, we know how desperate those people are going to be. I've not come alone, because with information is education. I'm not totally clear on all of the education that we'll need and how to get started. I believe we're ready. I believe all of the blueprint that we need is already there. And I've asked someone from the county to come today to visit me. In fact, I told her, I said, "I'm not going to tell you what I'm wearing because I don't know what I'm wearing." And I'm not going to tell you what I look like because I look like all the citizens here, except there's just one difference. So we did find each other today. And she's going to come forward. Her name is Lynn Schmidt. I just met her today, but she's given up her time to come and give a couple of minutes of education and information so that when we leave here today, when we go home and everybody's "look up there," I don't believe her, I don't believe her. When we pull out our insurances, we hope the next thing we can do is read an ordinance so we can make a call. It's between $250 to perhaps $1,000. Depends on where you live and how much your property is worth. It's affordable. Don't be caught with your pants down. Thank you.
Well, Lynn, that's quite a buildup, so we're waiting for it.
Okay. All right, so I'm Lynn Schmidt. I'm a flood engineer with the Department of Ecology here in Spokane, and I'm the National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator for our region, 13 counties of Washington State. In Washington, FEMA delegates the authority to implement the National Flood Insurance Program to Ecology. So that's, you know, one of my primary duties. So Danette was really interested in purchasing flood insurance. So she found the Department of Ecology contacts and gave us a call, and we found out that she does not have the option to purchase flood insurance because her community doesn't participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And that's what she said is absolutely correct. Your homeowner's insurance won't cover any sort of flooding in your house, but the NFIP will. I'm just going to call it the NFIP for short. So anyway, I thought I'd just come to the council and introduce myself. I'll leave a pile of cards in case you have any questions and want to talk about it further. Liberty Lake has a really small flood plain. In fact, it's really close to here, it just covers basically the trailside, Gulf course. But you don't have to be in the flood plain, or, you know, they call it the 100-year flood plain, it's just an interesting map that FEMA came up with. You don't have to be in that flood plain to purchase flood insurance. In fact, upwards of at least 25% of flood insurance claims come from outside of this 100-year flood plain area. That speaks to sort of the inaccuracies of the map and also, they're pretty generous with their definition of what a flood is. So it's anything, oh, any surface water that crosses over either two parcels in a road right away can be one of the parcels, or is over two acres in size. And it's about $250 to $300 a year if your house is located outside of the flood plain. Yeah, so that's basically most of what I was going to talk about for a short little time here.
She mentioned that the ordinance are, you know, the city's portion of this deal. And this is new to me, so if you can help guide us through that, I'd be much appreciated.
Sure, right. So for flood insurance to be available in your community, there's three basic things you need to do. The city fills out an application, it's a really short, one-page application to FEMA. And then you adopt a resolution of intent to join the National Flood Insurance Program. And then the third thing is to adopt a flood damage prevention ordinance. And there's a model ordinance that's written for the state of Washington by FEMA and Ecology. So basically, if you wanted to, you can just adopt it, change the names and adopt it as it. You can make it a little more stringent if you want, and then you just enforce the ordinance. And then we do what's called a community assistance visit, where we just check in on your flood plain program every five or 10 years or so. Either I'll come to town or someone from FEMA and take a look at any development that you've had in the flood plain, any problems you're having.
What's the cost to sign up for?
There, no, there's no.
No cost for the city?
No, just the cost to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so that's, we could do that.
Okay, yeah, so please, I'll be your local contact and help you through that.
You're taken care of. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, DJ. Good idea.
Thank you.
All right. Other citizen comments. Miss Inland.
I forgot to fill out a yellow paper, I'm sorry.
Right ahead.
My name's Claire Baker. I also live in the area that'd be impacted by this proposal. I understand what you've said, that nothing is currently on the agenda at this time about this. But clearly, this has been discussed, well thought about, planned. You've got five proposals here with very specific costs associated with them, so this has been in discussion for some time, but the homeowners obviously didn't know about it, because I live there and I didn't know about it. And none of my neighbors know about it. So I'd like to know, and this is comments that was specifically mentioned by the council, that this is not something that's being discussed at this time. But you can't come up with a proposal that ends in 892 and you're talking $4 million without having somebody prepare that proposal. So this has been discussed in council, but the public hasn't been made aware of it.
Exactly. We looked at that field, you know, the city bought the field, all 20 acres for $10. Built two ballparks, and at the time we were building the ballparks, we hadn't actually anticipated, built four ballparks to cut the full acreage. The school district came back and said, "Hey, we would really like to put a K through two school there." And our agreement was, if you ever want to build a school there, we'd turn it back to the property. If you want to buy the improvements, that's great, but, you know, if you just have empty land, you could build your school there. And so they came back to build, which is a K through two. They brought back the design, which left us, I think, three acres, Katie? About two or three acres on the north side of that elementary school.
Yeah, same apartment.
Still in the city hands. We talked about town square and the pools.
Yes.
Last year, we talked about town square without the pools this year. We talked about that piece of property earlier this year and maybe a little bit last year, what do we want to do there? Whether it be a field, whether it's just grass, whatever, we didn't know. And so that's what we went down that road to sit down and say, what are the, what are the possibilities? I will always look at what are the possibilities for a piece of property.
So these studies, obviously, these were done, these are proposals?
They, it's not, it wasn't a proposal, it wasn't, "Hey, we want to build this for you," whatever. It's just, it's from our perspective, of what could you do there? Okay? We had a lot of comments, well, especially in both these elections. We like the pool, we don't like the pool. We don't like the pool down at town square, we like the pool someplace else, whatever it is. We're all just trying to get information.
Right. And I understand about town square.
And the better the information, you know.
And I saw this, but I'm.
This is a bit, excuse me now.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
You know, as, from a standpoint, this is about the best quotation. You know, is, from a standpoint, this is about the best quotation I've ever gotten through feedback from the splash. Because I said, "Here's an idea." You know, it's not an in-Jo idea, it isn't a fixed idea, it's just an idea, a possibility. We've got a great feedback tonight. We've got twelve people here talking about, "Hey, we don't want an argument." Perfect. It doesn't bother me, you know? My, my goal is to provide our community with what they need. If they need a sports field, if they just need grass, if they want a bigger kindergarten playground, it doesn't make any difference to me. If they want parking, they get more parking. If you don't want any more parking, get less parking. If you want the Melbourne, Melbourne Street to be blocked off during certain school hours, I mean, that's a possibility. You know, or more traffic patrol? That's what we're looking for. We're looking for feedback, whether it's on social media, whether they come to our website or come to our city council. And so we appreciate the feedback. You know, there's nothing out here that's been enjoying, it's just an idea. And so your feedback has been very well received tonight. I think the council, very much, you know, in probably agreement with you because they don't have four million dollars in their pocket to build a pool with.
Could you tell me when those ideas were come up with, when you guys came up with these, and the pictures showing where the layout would be?
This is the first time I've seen them.
Those, those were, those were done in August, when we, when we put what are the possible, "Here's a piece of property, you could put," and then, what's it, Parametrics? Is that Katie, where this came from? So, we go to Parametrics, which is our consulting group, and say, "Here's a piece of property. We're looking at, what can we do here?" You know, this community's thought about a pool, maybe not you guys, but other people. And other people talked about a sports field. We've got a lot of people talking about a more usable sports field rather than just our park. People want a sports field other than just a baseball field. And so they went to Parametrics and said, "Here, give us five little layouts of what you think might be." And so we can bring it to council and have a workshop on it. Tonight was supposed to be a scheduled workshop. It got canceled. But tonight was supposed to be a scheduled workshop on what are the possibilities there? So that we could start to talk about it. Talking about things is not deciding.
No, but being part of the talking, the council deciding.
And we, and then again, until you, until you put something out there, and, I mean, I don't want to get into this discussion, but until you put something out there, which I did in the splash, nobody knew. So, when you get in the splash, you see what we're thinking about, we invite your comments. We want you to come down. I want to know. Not, the pool is not for me. It's definitely not for my wife. Only way she'd get the pool is if somebody threw it. So, okay, so that's where we're at. So this is how this got here tonight on this slide.
That's how this got here. Is there anything that Parametrics provided about the operating costs with that idea?
No, there wasn't, it wasn't. This was just a, "What could you do on a piece of property?" And like you see, there's six different things that you could do. A, B, C, D, E, and F. F is the weeds that we have there today. E is a sports field. And everything else is, if you want a pool here, pool here, pool here, whatever the location is, size, whatever, they're all about four and a, four and a half million dollars. So, that's, that's, you've heard everything that we've heard...
So far.
So far. So you're right on the cutting edge.
So we did have an agenda item several months ago where the council approved the money for these, and this is the first time we've seen it. We've thrown around ideas, for a pool in many different areas, and we've thrown, and we wanted to see what could go here. And that's really, because I went through all the agendas back to the beginning of January to see what had been, because I think it was you or somebody else on the side that asked. And we had one work, we had a couple joint workshops with the Plating Commission, and we just kind of took these generalities, said that we approved those seven thousand dollars or whatever it was to come up with some ideas, and then this has been the first we've seen of it since then.
At what point in this process, when it's going to be in the neighborhood like that, do you have to let anybody in the neighborhood know about it?
I don't, I think what we try to do is make sure that the entire community knows about what we're doing. Okay? That's why we normally, tonight, this is normally what would have been a workshop item. So we'd have a workshop, I mean, to put it on. Now we have our community messaging board. You know, community messaging board, we're talking about this in the splash. Again, we, we rely on the splash, you know, because Craig Howard's here and normally doing the meetings on a regular basis. And so he reports what he hears. And so, and he, he says, you know, "What are you thinking about?" So I, in this particular case, I think he asked me this question, "What do you think about what's going to happen? Where would you put a pool? And where would you, what have you guys talked about?" I said, "Hey, we have this three acres of property, or three or five acres of property left up there. What's this going to do? Send a community." Whatever. It does begin. All it is, is we're trying to get the information out. It got out. You guys showed up, and great comments. Because, you know, again, kind of going back to where we were at last year after the Town Square, we didn't get the data from the election. We didn't know what the community wanted. We knew what, we lost the election by a hundred and three votes. We really didn't get the data of what the voters at that time sent, because it was mixed. And that's what we need to do. Again, we try to get that information. We continue to try to get that information. We try to engage the community, because that's what's important. You know, we try to engage the community with our website. You know, we try to engage, we need to do, engage the community better with our Facebook, our Facebook page, because that's where the information should come from. So I appreciate you guys coming, I really do. This has been a great meeting, you know, from a standpoint of feedback. We want feedback. Tell your neighbors. Tell your neighbors to come on down, seven-five-five-sixty-seven-hundred, call me on my cell phone, nine-nine-zero-zero-five-zero-nine, call any of the council members. We want your feedback. We want your written comments. Just send an email. We want that. Because we don't know everything, and we sure don't know what you're thinking about if you're not telling us. Right? And so, we invite it. So, again, from citizen comments, hopefully this kind of answered a lot of questions. I know we probably stirred up some questions, but again, call up. Call Katie, call myself, call any of the council people. Send an email. All we want to know is hear from you, what you want. You know, it's not, I'm not here to dictate what I want. The council's not here to dictate what they want. The community's here to dictate what they want.
Okay, I don't want a pool.
There you go. Perfect. We got, we got that message.
Can I add one small comment?
One more.
Mine?
No problem.
That'll be great. Thanks again for the time. I just wanted to say that it would be very, if a pool went there, it would be very easy to compile data on vandalism, crime, break-ins, et cetera, in that whole neighborhood, and specifically on this street and that street. And I would be financially negatively impacted by lowering of values, of home values. Now, and then action might need to be taken. Now, if you multiply that by two-hundred homes within, you know, shouting distance of this pool, and, you know, there could be a very large negative financial impact to the city. I had other words that I told my neighbors that I was going to reference this type of statement, but I think that's suffice.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. All right, so we're at the Local Business Spotlight, Origin Forensics. Where is Origin?
Jared.
Jared Carter? Are you Jared?
I am, sir.
Okay. You guys are at the Internet Portal, right?
Yes, sir, we are at the Internet Portal. So I'm here with my office manager, Aaron Fox. My name is Jared Carter. I have a PhD, but you don't have to call me doctor if you don't want to. It doesn't really bother me either way. I am not here to talk about the pool whatsoever. So, I will move on beyond that. I did bring some toys to show everybody, so if anybody's interested in that, please come up and ask questions. I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. Thank you to the city council, mayor, and Anne for reaching out and inviting us. It's somewhat interesting that, being a business owner, been here since 2008, when we moved into Tier Point, and never thought I would get asked to come to the city council. And then the other day, I was walking through the Starbucks with my, with my jacket on, and Odin was parked outside of the Starbucks and grabbed my attention and said, "Come over here and sit down." I don't even know this guy, and he's forcing me to sit down. So, I thought it was kind of interesting. So we had a good long discussion. Again, my name is Jared Carter. I own and operate Origin Forensics in the Tier Point building. We are a forensic consulting firm. We specialize in automotive accident reconstruction and also injury analysis. So that means everything from outside of a vehicle crash to the inside of the vehicle crash. There's really multiple crashes that are taking place when an automotive crash takes place. You have the car impacting another vehicle or some object, then you have the people inside the vehicle that are impacting some portion of the vehicle, or maybe going outside of the vehicle and impacting the ground or something along those lines. And then you have the injuries that take place in, inside the body, where parts of the body are actually moving around, and you get bones breaking and things of that nature inside the body. So there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into that kind of analysis. We have to be on the leading edge of what we do, primarily because I operate not just in, in the Spokane region or in the eastern Washington region. I operate all over the country. So I've been doing reconstruction now since nineteen, since 2000, but I restarted back in 1993. And I've been everywhere from Fairbanks, Alaska, to the southern tip of Florida, doing car crash investigation and reconstruction. We're trying to branch out in this area to bring our particular sets of skills and our more advanced technology to this area and provide that kind of service vocally here, because there really no one that has that kind of capability here in this region. And that includes some of the things you're seeing here. We've got, this is a very expensive survey and mapping UAV that we use to map crash sites. We can map large areas in high resolution from low altitude and map an entire crash site so that you have a complete contextual map of the area. You're not just taking individual points and measurements, you're actually creating a digital photograph, if you will, or a three-dimensional photograph from the air of the entire crash site. So you've got some tire marks, debris fields, vehicle rest positions, anything that might happen to be of interest in that area. I've also got, behind that, a 3D laser scanner, which is something that is relatively new technology as well. This is another way of creating a three-dimensional map of an area, taking a three-dimensional photograph. It has a laser beam in it. You set the, set it up, and it spins around, and fires a laser beam out, and everything it can hit with the laser beam, it can measure. So it makes a three-dimensional map of everything that's around it. We've got more gear back at the office, and I welcome anybody from the community or anybody on the city council, mayor, to come by. I know Katie said she's an engineer, even though she doesn't want to be married. And if you would like to come by and see some of our technology, and I was going to bring a PowerPoint presentation, give you death by PowerPoint, but I only had fifteen minutes, and I figured that was overkill. So, I am here to just discuss a little bit. I've, I love Liberty Lake. I moved here in 2004, my, this was my wife and I, our first house is Meadowwood Glen. And we decided, we looked all over the city, and at the end of the day, we decided that Liberty Lake was the place we wanted to be in comparison to any other place we could have lived in the city. And that's another reason why I moved my business out here. My business was originally in the valley. Started in the valley in 2000, and then I said, "You know what? I want to, I want to move my business closer to my house." And I liked Liberty Lake already, and I liked the community feel. I told Odin about this the other day. I said, "I really like the community. I like the openness, and I like the, the feeling that it is geared towards families." And that's one of the things, one of the reasons why my wife and I moved down here. We now have two young daughters, so, we didn't have them before we moved down here, so thanks for that. So, I guess that's pretty much it. I can go into more detail. I don't want to overload you guys or anything like that. I really was more interested in sort of introducing myself, and then if you have any questions, I saw Katie raise her hand.
So, you mentioned automobile, reconstruction of an automobile accident?
Yes.
Kind of an anecdote is, our police chief got a information from Washington State Patrol, and there was twenty-seven accidents on I-90 between May 1st and July 14th? Seventeen. Which is shocking, because anytime there's an accident on I-90, it really affects our community. But my question is, do you ever reconstruct natural disasters? So like, let's say there was a mudslide, or do you just strictly do automobiles?
We've focused on automobile collisions. We've also been looking to diversify into law enforcement activities. We've done some initial work with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office, looking into how we might assist them with some of our technology, like our drone, to do some work with them. Natural disasters is not something that I would say we're well versed in, but depending on the extent of what you were asking us to do, I think we could certainly get involved in it. At the very least, to look at a natural disaster from the perspective of mapping out the area of damage and showing what was there before and what's there now and how it's changed. That's something we can certainly, we can certainly do. We have the technology to do that.
Are most of your clients' insurance companies, government agencies?
Um, ours, so we do, um, so our biggest clients are really auto manufacturers. We do a lot of products liability litigation to support. Our biggest client historically has been Ford Motor Company. So we've been doing work, I've been doing work for Ford Motor Company since early 2000s, and have testified for them a number of times in trials across the country. Done work for all the other major auto manufacturers except for the Germans. I don't know why. Just never got called, so I don't know what to do about that. And other, and other suppliers, we do work for insurance companies as well. So whether it's a claim, or whether it's a litigation, and they've hired counsel, we do some work with plaintiffs attorneys as well. And then we also have started to, or migrate into looking at, working with trucking companies, and then like I mentioned, law enforcement as well.
Well, thank you. It was a great presentation. I see you have your drones that you have.
Yeah, I, I brought it with in case anybody wanted to take a look at it. I, I'm a, I'm a big boy with big toys, and I don't have to show them on the radio. Any other questions or...
So you have your drone flying license now?
Um, myself and my two engineers in the office, we all have remote pilot certifications from Park 107 for the IBA. So, yeah, we, we dot the i's and cross the t's at my company. We don't just go out and fly randomly.
What is your customer mix? Is it primarily insurance companies?
Um, right now, it's a, it's a, forty percent of our casework is for Ford Motor Company right now. The other sixty percent is diverse group, including plaintiffs, some kernel, some trucking companies, and then also insurance as well is in the mix. I haven't really dug down in to figure out exactly how many insurance-related claims are in there. But it's, it's trending. Over the years, we've been trying to diversify away from all of our rights in one basket, being products liability, and migrate more into other areas. And that's partly the reason why we started looking at law enforcement as well, is what can we do in our community to provide services that maybe law enforcement doesn't have.
And there's a lot of, right now, oil trains, coal cars, and so forth. Have you ever thought, or is there a company like yours that looks into the rail accidents?
Rail accidents? I know a few. I know a few individuals. As far as, as far as reconstructing a rail crash, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stick my neck out and say I'm an expert in that by any stretch of the imagination. But if you wanted to forensically map it and document it in a way that all the evidence would be preserved for posterity, and it would be preserved so that it's contextualized from the air all the way to the ground, I could do that.
Well, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. Thanks for addressing our community and having your business here. Living, live, work, and play, right?
Yes.
Is that the council?
We have.
Okay. All right, so now the mayor and the city council reports. The Community Development Committee.
Hi, yes, thank you very much, Mayor Peterson. The Community Development Committee meeting was held on August 29th here at City Hall. Present were councilmembers Bob Moore, Oda Leinfert, Keith Cobleson, and from the Plating Commission, Chairman Stan Jokel. From city staff, it's Katie Allen, Jennifer Kemp, and Andrew Staples. The first item on the agenda we discussed were the city council agenda overviews of currently planned and future planned items. The first item on the agenda we discussed were the city council agenda overviews of currently planned and future planned items. We discussed the Mission Avenue Trail, which we discussed previously, and there was no, no news to report on that. Staff presented us with a street project brochure and I think you all have copies of that to be attached, which is basically just an overview of the planned street project that the city has planned. We discussed the, we presented a functional organization chart. We had organization charts previously for the city, but they were not functional. Functional ones are again. And I think, I think it's on the website also now.
Make sure we can hear.
Sorry. Thank you. Where was it? Okay. The organization chart is also on the city's website. We discussed the Orchard Park land transfer and there's really been a temporary delay in consternation there. We discussed the pool options, which you all looked at this evening. And in that context, it was kind of the conclusion of the members of city council that were on that committee, that we shouldn't be looking at individual projects as a reaction to the failure of proposition one. That we have to look at all of the projects that the city has possibly. We still have to decide what we're going to do with Town Square property. We have to decide what we're going to do with the school property that we own. We have to decide what we're going to do with the golf course and any other assets that the city owns. And therefore, I reiterated that we really needed a long-term strategic plan for the city and that we should be working on that rather than looking at individual projects like one swimming pool in the city. And that's just a reaction to something that failed. Proposition one has failed now three times. Obviously, the voters in the community don't want the community center and the library. We still have to decide what are we going to do with, about the library. We're in the business of providing services to the community and we have to provide a certain, maintain a certain level of services to the community. And we have to just plan on how we're going to do that. What we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, when we're going to do it, and how we're going to pay for it. So I think it was a conclusion of the council members there that if the staff does not have sufficient resources to complete a strategic long-term plan, even though a lot of those pieces are already existing, that we should, we should budget in 2018 for a certain amount of money in order to have a consultant come in and complete that, that process. My thought afterwards was that, you know, perhaps we should consider amending the 2017 budget in order to contact consultants or get out some requests for proposals this year so that we can, we'll know more how to budget for, or major this year for 2018. We amended the budget before for different things and I can't think of anything more important than a long-term strategic plan for our city. The other, only other thing we discussed was the next meeting, which is October the 24th, 2017, at 12 o'clock here at City Hall. Thank you very much.
Finance committee.
Finance committee met this evening. In attendance were council member Brickner Supers, myself, and our Jake Stevenson, our finance director. We reviewed the office 2017 monthly dashboard, year-to-date versus 2016 at the same time. Sales tax is still up about 14.8% and expenses are on track. We discussed some possible updates to the financial policies. We will be reviewing those updates at the next finance committee meeting, which is Tuesday, Tuesday from now, and eventually those will come back to council for review and approval. We talked a little bit about the 2018 budget with regards to property tax. That resolution is in October and our Jay's putting together, obviously, in some of the different scenarios that we look at every year. So our choices as usual are either 1% increase or to bank that 1% or not neither. And we also looked, are looking at some possible changes to the percentages, mixed percentages on utility tax. Right now it's a great 3% on several different utilities. We're looking at possible change in percentages on each one of those. The target is still bringing in X amount of money for the streets fund through that, but by leaving some of the tax on some of the essential services that we all use, electric, gas, those kind of things, as opposed to what some would call a luxury or an option. We talked about insurance on the, on our assets. Not a lot to report there. The 2016 audit starts September 11th. The entrance interview has not been scheduled as of yet. I know there's a council member or two who typically want to attend that. And we looked at vouchers. Besides, after, there's probably not much else to discuss tonight on finance.
Public safety.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this evening Keith, I and Chief Brian met to discuss public safety. Let's see, Chief Brian Collins of Spokane Fire wasn't available and I think Pamela was out of town, so we did not have a library discussion. That I am pleased to report, three audits were performed in the city's police department most recently, one randomly selected from the Department of Justice. There were no significant findings during the course of those audits. Our police department is very well-run. It's back to school night and where we had wanted to go for the Kiwanis cook hot dogs and hamburgers for everybody tonight, that got canceled because of the smoke. But I, I need to reflect, the police department will be stationing one traffic control officer at each school throughout the commute hours, one per school through the end of the month so that our, not only scope, but our, our police officers will be on-site in order to support traffic and movement of cars throughout the community. Really grateful Chief Brian has met with both the principals of new school individually to talk about security and updates of security objectives. I think it's a great moment to talk public safety and we talk about the operations of our local schools and the ability for law enforcement to be able to act as needed if it should be called for. Chief, Chief Brian is in the process of budget development along with the rest of the city staff, has outlined collection objectives for his department to be revealed in the upcoming budget. We have a new camera mounted up on top of the pro shop golf course at Trailhead. 360 degree swivel tilt allows the chief as well as I think the officers to be able to access remotely that visibility actions within the city. Recently, the department had a firearms training simulator in, to provide training to the officers. A great moment, I think, in supportive training and retaining skills amongst the department. That we're in a NarCam training program. Each officer through a grant program will be equipped with this antidote for opiate-based overdose activities. This is a great moment for our city to be able to offer that as a public safety. Opiate, opiate addiction is a crisis and it affects our community, our region as a whole. That Chief has been responsive regarding record, records management requests that have come in through the department and specifically our records management tool. We are, in my opinion, leading the region and the state regarding records management, the tools that we use and their compliance conditions. And Brian was able to collaborate with some other agencies to get, I would say, some very, very informative dashboards together, providing quick and I'd say effective response to the public records requests that had come through. Quick observations of safety for theft. There's been a recent rash of cases of thefts of, I'll call them crimes of opportunity, high-end bikes taken out of open garage doors. This is a call to action for all of us, recognize this happens. In this case, Brian and Detective Cruz were able to locate one of the reported stolen bikes at a local pawn shop. You got it. And through investigative work was actually able to identify and serve a warrant and recovered four or five more bicycles that were taken from our community. So I want to recognize the efforts of our local police, police department at resolving and addressing property crime. That's something that we can really be proud of as a city with respect to what we, what we do. That's public safety.
Mayor reports. I hear you, Tom. Commissioner Agnew from the sewer district.
At your service, yes, sir.
Pardon?
I said, at your service, yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us what we're doing.
Do I have anything to report?
That's, that's exactly right. That's what I'm asking.
Well, we've been fortunate that despite the heat and lack of rainfall, that our water system has been able to maintain pressure. So knock on wood, a couple more weeks, we're gonna get through this season relatively unscathed.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
How's the flow rate in the river, Tom? Is it normal or below?
Well, the flow rate in the river is now a court established, or, or a court approved, adjudicated flow negotiated between Vista and Lake Corleone and, and the rest of us along the river. So, so there's a minimum beyond which theoretically it can't fall, which means that if it gets dry enough, someday Corleone Lake might get low enough so that this can be looked at again, but for right now, it's as good as it's supposed to be.
Mr. Mayor, just to, I wanted to add on to Bob's report from the community development meeting. A good portion of that meeting was, the pool issue was discussed because I, for one, being new to the, newly returned to the council, hadn't heard anything about that before. And it seemed like Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Langford also was caught off guard by the present, present, you know, presentation of the proposed, not proposed, but options for the property. I, my question I left there without really getting an answer for it. I didn't ask it, but where did the price, the estimates come from? Was that an outside agency that was previously contracted or was it something in-house?
No, we have a non-call engineering contract with Parametrics and at a council meeting, and I don't remember which council meeting, we had discussed funding different option scenarios and giving price tags to them so we could know kind of in general terms what each different option looked like price-wise. So that's.
So I guess the surprise is just timing of it. It just appeared in front of us, not knowing ahead of time that it was coming to.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Larry, do you represent the fire district today or?
No.
You're just a visitor?
No.
I didn't know if the fire district was here or not.
I know, but with all the fires around, if you haven't prepared your house for a fire by mowing for dry weeds down, you should get out of there.
Thank you. Good advice. So with that said, Katie, you're on.
Okay. Good evening, mayor members of the council and the community. Just a real quick update, we all know air quality in Liberty Lake is very dangerous. We allowed some of our staff to go home early, those that work outside, and we all know that we don't see an end in sight. Hopefully by the weekend, this thing will get better, but right now, just encourage everyone to take safety precautions to not be exposed to the very dangerous weather or air quality. Council rules and procedures, so this is a check back in on a resolution that's on your agenda for next council meeting, which is September 19th. We're gonna be talking about the council rules and procedures. We've amended those rules, we're proposing to amend them, I should say, so that there's no requirement to state your address when you speak and that on the yellow card, you will note whether or not you're a resident of Liberty Lake or not. That's how it's drafted right now. If you want us to change anything, I think Councilmember Moore, or excuse me, Councilmember Langford thought that maybe when the speakers stood up at the podium and spoke, that they could identify whether or not they were a citizen, or a resident of Liberty Lake. We could do that, but that's not in the resolution right now, the way it's drafted. So if you have any ideas of how you want to change it, let us know. But it basically requires, removes that requirement. The other thing on the agenda for next council meeting is a comprehensive plan amendment. So Greg Dorn and Amanda will be back and they will talk about the potential to amend our comprehensive plan to allow PUD development, plan unit development in the I-zone west of Matson. There's a public hearing on this and then there's also a second read of the ordinance. So that's on the agenda for next council meeting. The other thing I wanted to mention is the pedestrian beacons that we had purchased that were gonna go in on Country Vista near Home Depot, they've been delayed in delivery because of Hurricane Harvey. The devices were manufactured in Texas and so we don't have a delivery date and we expect it could be extended out of ways. So that project is waiting, hearing back from the manufacturer. Number five is related to tomorrow's the first day of school. Drive safely. And I just also wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Dunn mentioned, which is our police department has worked very closely with the school. They do have a traffic control plan. I hope it works and if it doesn't, they'll tweak it. We all know there's, you know, probably 1100 to 1200 kids in that school, so drive slowly. And I, if, if you have a choice to avoid that during school, coming and going, I would strongly encourage you to kind of avoid that area if you can. So mayor, I'm gonna go down to my last two items. So one is Liberty Lake Road. We know that the road got opened up last week. The traffic signals are being worked on tonight and they should be activated and tomorrow, they should be activated by tomorrow night. Is that correct?
It should be up and running hopefully for the Thursday morning.
For the Thursday morning. So that'll be good. Then there's general cleanup and there's hydro seating, just in case you're concerned about some of the periphery areas that have been graded out. Those are gonna be hydro seeded, but it's too dry right now to hydro seed, so the hydro seed probably won't go down till October. The landscaping, which is gonna go down the median, is scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday. A lot of plant material has been purchased for that. And we're still reviewing the change order that relates to kind of three different areas. One is the additional traffic control. We had a little bit of unforeseen conditions when we put in the reclaimed water line. And then the other was a quantity on the asphalt. So all that's being calculated and when we get a good number, we'll bring it back to council to address that. And then finally, on a happy note, there's traveling art. It's in the library right now. Pamela, I haven't seen it. I heard it's really good. And then also, if, as far as I know, unless the weather changes and affects it, we, there is art at Town Square this weekend at Farmer's Market. It's Friday night and Saturday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, Friday night and Saturday. So if you wanna come down and enjoy some local artists, they're, they're gonna have booths.
They have food trucks there too, right?
They, I don't know.
Yes. Yes, it's set on sorts of.
I think they have food trucks.
Food trucks and art.
So you can eat, eat and buy art and enjoy art.
And then eat again.
Okay. So if you're not doing anything Friday night, hopefully the, the smoke will be gone and.
It's kind of like from 4 to 7, 4 to 8 or something.
4 to 7.
7 to 4 hours in the park.
Okay. Mayor, that concludes my report.
I have a question. I think there were several of us who attended the school presentation, the school's, and that small indicated that their building was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. We're gonna find out who the contractors are and make sure we use them the next time. Thank you.
Hey, great customers.
Quick question, mayor. Katie, we were talking a couple weekends ago at Town Square about the wireless not working. Has anybody had a chance to look at that? So I tried it again Saturday with no luck.
Okay, we, okay, we were, we do have, we let the terror know that the Wi-Fi at Town Square needs to be fixed and it sounds like they have.
It's showing up, but it's not connecting.
Yeah, so they're aware of it. They, as far as I know, they have not fixed it.
They've got a lot of weekend problems. The terrorists have a lot of weekend problems lately with their signal. I don't know what their issues. I know several people have it instead. Just, just weekends, it's been going out over the last couple months.
Okay, we'll follow up with, with them. Smoke, I don't know.
It's been, it's been since the beginning of the market. I, from day one of the market this summer, I haven't had a chance to do it. Speaking of which, we are still looking for volunteers to man the farmer's markets on Saturdays. It has been up to two or three of us the whole summer and I'm getting extremely frustrated. I'm sad.
Depending on smoke, I have a soccer tournament this weekend, so I can't be there.
I also cannot be there. I'll, I'll be at the car show this weekend.
I know, yeah, and I'm driving your car, so I guess I'll be good too. So I guess we won't have anybody manning the city's portion of the booth.
Oh, we'll figure out something.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe the mayor show up. Everybody have fun. All right, that's another agenda approved, council meetings.
Mayor, we presented agenda 1 through to approve August 18th, 2017, the city council minutes, and also to approve 7th, September 5th, 2017 vouchers.
Second.
Moving second, further discussion. I hear you now, I'm good to say hi.
Hi.
Those are good.
Mayor. Mayor, move consent agenda 1 and 2 to general business. To war agreement for architectural and engineering design services for Trailhead Golf Course irrigation system.
Second.
Move the second, further discussion.
Little point of clarification, I was trying to read through, sorry, I'm putting it down to right now. Is this just for a, I just see site visit and evaluation, not just for the design itself?
That is correct, it's not for the design, it's survey, but also an estimate of budget.
What it costs to design it. Got you, thank you.
Further discussion? Not hearing all, could you say aye?
Aye.
Those are your resolutions 17-229.
Resolution number 17-229, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Motion?
Motion.
Second move? Move the resolution? Second move in the resolution?
Second move, resolution 17-229.
Okay, further discussion? Not hearing all, the favor raised right hand. I count six out of six, is that correct?
Yep.
It's adopted. And then, what do we have to move? Oh, citizen comments. Oh, I'm coming to Jim, I understand.
Yeah, so very quickly, our next meeting, September 19th. We're going to have a presentation by Jim Frank. He wants to come and share with you his development update over on the River District, and especially along Harvard Road. So that'd be very informative and an opportunity to ask questions about some of the projects that he's been working on between Tutina and, excuse me, River District. We also have an MOU with the city's Spokane Records Department for SOCPE, I believe, Services, helping them out with their records management. We have a public hearing on the city's comprehensive plan amendment, and also the second reading of that resolution. And then we finally have the resolution related to the city council's rules of procedure and the normal vouchers and minutes.
All right, so we're at the public comment. Any further public comments? There you go, DG.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn that in. This is a think, an idea. If we own the air rights to the top of the library, it indeed might be even more advantageous if, when we're looking at what Councilmember Moore talked about in re-looking at our strategic plan, to build above the existing or retrofit the current library two stories up. Indeed, it will enhance the community. We need libraries, children need libraries. They need to know what they look like before they're non-existent. And this way, we also save money in re, just renovating what we have, making it more modern, you know, two stories up. It doesn't take away from the community, it get into it, it also adds to the community. The only thing is to look for additional parking perhaps, where parking can be designed where it somehow fits into that equation. Now we're looking at spending our money wisely, that may be a possibility to look into. The only other thing, and I just gleaned this from your comments, thank you, Mr. Moore. The other thing is when we're looking at the children, I have two grandchildren that attend Liberty Lake. And perhaps there can be a notice that goes out to the communities. Perhaps we can close off the streets to include the main road that is adjoining the Pavilion Park. And I'm not sure what that road is, I travel it.
Multer.
Pardon?
Is it Multer?
Multer.
No, Multer's down on the other end, but it's the...
Boone or Country Vista?
Oh, what's off of Boone, is that Country Vista? But I knew, I'm still learning my presence.
That's Multer. Multer goes south north.
So Multer is at the end near the gym, correct?
That's Mission Vista.
Oh, wow, you know what I mean. Close it off and let the community know that during these times, from these times to these times, these areas are closed. That will allow families, parents to come and go across the street. We don't have to have the little beacons going on, blah, 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 blah. Everyone's walking, children are safe. Cars traverse, they make the U-turn, go all the way down, make their turns. It's cost-effective. People already have to stop when the beacon's going off. They're probably bored when they're driving through because of all the students. That's also a way we can look at utilizing our money, our time, and our resources a lot better than to, you know, come up with things that may work or may not. But that was just another suggestion, only because I heard about the safety. I do walk my grandchildren back and forth and back and forth. Sometimes I walk back and forth on my own without my grandchildren. But anyway, again, I need to do a lot of things that I used to not do if I need to do it over and over and over again. So those are all my suggestions. Thank you.
Any other comments? Not hearing any at 8:20, we're going executive session for personal matters, and that's 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
15.
I'm thinking 10 to 15, can you say that? Twelve and a half.
We'll be back here at 8:35. The book's already made, always do it. Can you take that in your, get a hold of her? Get all that stuff, put it together. Now it's in your ballpark. There's the rest of the people.